Good afternoon, everyone. Today is April, April. April plus five months, I believe. September 9th, 2025 is 1:00 P.M. This is a City of Prescott City Council's study session. We'll start with roll call, please.
Mayor Good.
Present.
Mayor Protam Can't Tell Me.
Here.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi.
I am here.
Councilman Moore.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Councilman Grady and Councilman Montoya are excused from the meeting.
We have two items on the agenda today for this study session. City Clerk, would you like to read item A?
Presentation and discussion regarding possible updates to the Prescott City Charter for approval at a future city election. And Joe and I are going to be handling this one for you all. Very brief presentation, and then an opportunity for council discussion and any public comment, if there is any. So during the 2025 election, the primary, none of the five candidates for council received a majority of the valid ballots cast based on the city charter calculation. And IT, I can't get the presentation to advance. If you could just go to the first slide for me, please. Thank you. So the current language in the charter reads as follows. At the primary election, any candidate who shall receive a majority of all the valid ballots cast at such election for that office shall be declared elected to the office for which he is a candidate, and no further election shall be held as to said candidate. That charter language was approved by the voters in November of 2010, and we have used the same calculation since that time to determine whether or not a candidate receives a majority of the valid ballots cast. That calculation is the total ballots minus overvotes, because overvotes are considered invalid ballots, divided by two plus one to get to the 50% plus one. Between 2010 and 2025, eight elections have been conducted, and there have been two runoffs during that time due to zero candidates having received a majority of the valid ballots cast. Prior to 2010, the charter language read as follows. At the primary election, any candidate who shall receive a majority of all the votes cast at such election for that office shall be declared elected to the office for which he is a candidate, and no further election shall be held as to said candidate. Between 1985 and 2010, the city conducted 13 elections, and there were three runoffs based on none of the candidates in the primary receiving a majority of the votes. Since 1985, there have been five elections where there was no runoff in a general. That happened in 1989 and 1981, which would have been under the vote language of the charter. And then again in 2011, 2015, and 2023, under the ballot language in the city charter. So.
Councilwoman Furworth had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Sarah, your facts on the previous slide that talked about the number of runoffs. Are you just talking about the council races? Are you also including, I know in the last decade, there's been a mayoral where three mayoral candidates jumped in and two went all the way to the end. So I'm just trying to understand your facts.
This is, this is just council runoffs, and this is just council runoffs based on zero candidates receiving majority. There have been other runoffs where there were, for example, one or two of the seats duly elected in the primary. This is just specific to the question that has come up since the primary election.
Of no one getting in on the, on the.
Correct.
Okay.
So given the primary election, there were a number of questions with regard to the manner in which the calculations are done, and also whether or not the city should potentially change the charter language in order to either clarify language or bring the charter more in line with state statute. I did also receive a letter from our county elections director, Lauren Custis. She couldn't be here today. There were some questions with regard to the difference between counting ballots versus counting votes, and then also whether or not the county could break out the undervotes. So for an example, whether or not they could see and tell us how many people voted for zero candidates, one candidate, two candidates in a council, for the council seats that would be considered an undervote. And she stated that tabulating, counting ballots, in the 2025 August election, the city of Prescott had 17,706 ballots tabulated. In other words, 35,732 voters were eligible to vote, and 17,706 of those voters were given voting credit for 49.55% of the electorate participating in the election. When tabulating ballots, the county's Election Management System, or EMS, which is Unison Voting Solutions, Inc., scans the ballots to detect markings at the target area or oval and will compile the votes for each candidate and contest. When contests have multiple seats to fill, i.e. vote for three, the EMS tabulates the markings in the target areas. In the case of an undervote, the EMS system will assign the number of missing votes up to the vote for number. So again, that's the zero, the one, or the two, to the undervote category. In summary, the total votes cast for the contest below, which is the council seats, is 39,216. The total undervotes was 13,821. Total overvotes was 81. All three of the numbers combined equal 53,118, divided by three, given the vote for three, and that equals the total number of ballots, which was 17,706. She added that there is not an option for the EMS to report the breakdown of undervotes, the number of ballots that had votes of zero, one, or two for candidates. So before the council today is to discuss the charter language and make some determinations on how you'd like staff to potentially proceed with a potential amendment to the charter. We can either retain the current language as is, revise the language to add clarifications, or revise to mirror state statute. And Joe is also available if the council has any questions.
You know, Sarah, one of the questions I had was whether the county's tabulation system could actually count votes versus ballots. So do they have that capability with their current system?
So they do tabulate votes. You can see in the canvas that was provided by the county that they provide us with a number of votes. The votes equal the ballots. So that was that breakdown that Lauren provided in the letter that I sent to you all earlier today that I just read aloud.
Yeah, but counting the votes for which candidates rather than just votes versus ballots is a more detailed analysis, because that's the one that I think most people are referencing in the state, some of the state requirements for counting votes and not ballots.
The county can count both ballots and votes. What the county cannot do is determine the number of ballots that have zero votes. They can just give a total undervote count, but cannot tell us, you know, this many ballots had zero votes, or this many ballots had one vote, and so forth. So they can do both, but they can't give us a breakdown on the undervote.
So they can only give you a total of undervotes?
Right. Correct.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few thoughts on this process, and I just want to make a few comments. I think part of the problem with the current system, where sometimes it does result in no clear winners at the primary level, is that the way our election process is set up in the community, and it's not a city function, but a community function, is that all of the debates, the forums, you know, whether it's R-WOP, or League of Women Voters, or different organizations, all of that campaigning opportunity to learn about candidates is done prior to the primary. And a lot of work goes in for candidates prior to the primary to try to get elected. And if there's no winner, unfortunately, there's nothing that occurs after the primary election until the general election that allows community members to really learn about the candidates. And there seems to be a huge lack of interest in the election after the primary, and there's kind of, I think, a burnout. And it seems that we should adjust the language so that maybe we can facilitate the process of getting a winner in the primary, or I don't know why we need to have a primary and a general if, if nobody's going to win. It just seems redundant. And all of those functions that are performed in the community to learn about candidates all occurs before the primary. So I really do feel like it would be helpful to change and not continue with the way we're doing it.
Mayor Protam Can't Tell Me.
Thank you, Mayor. Can, can we go back two slides? So if you're reading this, to me at least, if you're literally saying the votes cast, you're basically indicating, to me, the definition of a vote is somebody voting for an office. But I've had many reports now after this election that many people voted for the mayor only and did not vote for any council members, but yet they're going to receive a vote because of the way we do it by counting the ballots. Does that make sense? So if we don't have the ability to, to break down those ballots, how many votes were given to each office, then we are applying blank ballots to a city council seat if that person voting did not vote for council and voted for mayor only, which of course you can see in the numbers with the, the undervotes. So that would be one recommendation, to be able to change that word "vote" to "ballots cast," even though you can see the discrepancy that I just described. The other problem I have is later on in the sentence where it says, I think it's back on the other one.
The other one, though, is the, is the previous language. That's the charter language until 2010 where it was changed to this one.
Well, but it, okay, so my next point is where it says "for that office." Let me see. Where is that? Yeah, so, so again, you're, now when you add that verbiage in there, you're indicating "for that particular office." So there's only two offices being run for, the mayor and the city council. So to me, you're saying, pull those votes up for the particular office, but we don't have the capabilities of doing that. So again, somebody's getting the benefit of an empty ballot, even though they were not voted on, voted for.
That, "for that office," and we've discussed this quite a bit, and I've sent a memo to you, and we've talked about it, but that "for that office" language does introduce ambiguity into the current charter. So that's why we proposed, I think the real discussion we're interested in hearing is, A, does the ballots cast versus votes cast, what makes sense to council? And then assuming it's ballots cast, we still probably should change the language of the charter just to clarify because of the ambiguity.
Agreed with that. I completely agree. Now, what about, can we discuss possibly, because of the cost to the taxpayer, how many, somebody said 80,000, I think I read it, to go forward into the general, to rerun this race again? Can we just talk about, because I'm really not clear myself on how I feel about this, if we were to be able to just do, let's say there's two seats available for council, some verbiage that would indicate the top two vote-getters would move forward. And that way, you wouldn't have to have, go to the general, to Eric's point there. I am bothered a little bit about the extra expense of rerunning this all over again, not only the expense to the taxpayer, but the candidates. It's like starting from ground zero all over again, and then you have the ambiguity of trying to get those same voters to come back and re-vote again. It's going to be interesting to see if the top two vote-getters that got over 8,000 votes this last, for the primary, if they're going to get that same amount or more for the general. And if they end up losing hypothetically, I, because people didn't show up, that's a tough pill to swallow. So I would like to discuss that further. What would be the downside to indicating in the verbiage that the top, however many seats are available, three, let's, in this case, three vote-getters go through? Is there a downside to that?
I think that's just, that's a, kind of a legislative question, and it's, that's the question we want to hear from you. I think there's, I don't think it's about plus sides or downsides. I think it's about how you see the primary process playing out. And that's really a discussion for, that's your decision more than it is ours.
So council members that are here, what do you think? I mean, just show of hands, is that something valid?
You're out of order.
Sorry. Thank you.
Councilman Gambogi.
When I moved here over 12 years ago, I was amazed at some of the things I saw, like Pioneer Parkway, a Beltway around a small city, it's 40,48,000, in the downtown. And I think whoever put this process together kind of understood Prescott. I mean, first of all, the way we do it, the focus is on either the candidates or proposals like 484, 482. And I think it gets, lets the residents focus in on the candidates. In November, you're going to have a much bigger turnout, and the local candidates take a backseat to the national candidates. I think also we're here, and somebody's got to call this out, because there's residents or candidates in here that are gaming the system. When they single-shot, they're, they're undervoting, and what, Sarah, I think you said we had 13,000 undervotes?
About 13,800, yes.
And I think what I do is leave it the way it is and clean up the language a little bit.
Councilwoman Furworth.
Thank you, Mayor. I am exactly where I was on this topic a couple of weeks ago when we discussed this. I think there's a reason for the primary, and I do think it's a reason to, and it exists to whittle things down. I believe voters get excited about candidates when the candidates and the other organizations who host education events get to the voters. And I don't think we got to the voters enough this year. And I think their votes, 484 had no problem. They got to the voters. So for me, the primary exists to allow people who got the majority of the community who votes to get behind them. And so I believe the primary, I'm with Ted, I think we have to clarify the language, including the calculation, so that there's crystal clear direction going forward. But for me, again, I don't want to change the charter right now in a major way to go to voting unless we find ourselves, I think we're in this community, a microcosm of everything that's going on across America, where putting yourself up to be a candidate is a scary and ugly proposition. Politics is really rough, and, and a lot of candidates, I mean, I talked to a lot of people trying to get them to be a candidate for council this year, and most people said, "I'm not putting myself through that." And so if we continue to find ourselves in this community having a small group of candidates, maybe down the road, we rethink this strategy. But within the last decade or two, we had races where there was three mayoral candidates. I don't ever want to see a mayor win in the primary who only had 33-point-something percent of the vote. I think the mayor needs to have a majority of the voters behind them to run their agenda. And I think about the same way for the council members. There's no, you know, not much difference in powers between the mayor and the council members. So I'm all for, right now, keeping it as is, not going to a vote-based primary, and let's, you know, see where things shake out down the road.
And could I address that just briefly? I, I will say, under, if we change it to the votes cast language, we wouldn't be in a situation where a mayor could be elected with only 33% of the vote, because you still have to have 50% of the, of the people who voted. So the reason why you have a different calculation for council positions is because there's three open seats. So this, the state statute says, you take the amount of people who voted, and then you divide it by the amount of seats open, so it'd be three, then divide that by two. But for a mayor position, you could have 10 people voting, or, or 10 people running, or three people running, or whatever it is, but you wouldn't divide it by any amount because there's only one seat. So then it would be the total amount of people who voted for mayor divided by two, which is just half. So you wouldn't have that, that situation with a mayor. If we changed it, the mayor calculation would essentially be the same. It would really be a change for the council positions. And so what it would do, if we changed it, it would reduce the amount of runoffs we had, we would have. It would then give more value to an undervote. That, that's kind of the, the calculus that you're applying. The change would create less runoffs, but would increase the value of an undervote.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. And I think that's exactly what we don't want to do. We don't want to increase the, the value of an undervote, because as candidates are running for office, I think a lot of times they're encouraging their supporters to do a single-shot strategy where they're only voting for one candidate, and that really reduces the overall numbers for everybody, obviously, and it skews the final numbers. So I think that is exactly the wrong thing for us to do.
Well, I know, I took some time to look at many of those elections going back probably 25 years. One of the things that happens when you have a lot of candidates, when you're, you're just looking at the current primary and thinking about the top three candidates, because we didn't have that many candidates running. So in this case, I think the top three probably makes a lot of sense. But when you have maybe 10 or 12 candidates running for three offices, then only the top six go to a primary. And what happened before was that some of the voters that wanted the people in the bottom part of that candidate list, they ended up endorsing some other candidate, and someone who would have been in the top three, or let's say the third person in the top three got bumped, because more votes then came in during the runoff to put the, maybe the fourth or the fifth person in as the top three of the candidate list. So that, that changes some of the concerns, I think, when we have a lot of candidates running. But you're right, the last few years, there's a lot of people don't want anything to do with politics, much less be a candidate for it. So I think when you look at that, that historical condition, then the current process that we use does make more sense when we have lots of candidates. So that's our dilemma. Councilman Gambogi.
Once upon a time, Ken Bennett and Perry Harden were running for city council. They didn't make it, so they had to go to the runoff. I think, if, I remember what Ken told me, he, he was number four, and Perry was number five, and when they went to the general election, both of them got elected. So I, I, I think there's some benefit to the way we do it. Again, my credit to the founding fathers. Yeah, there's, after the election, or excuse me, after the primary election, there's kind of a downturn, but I think the Republican women are having candidates come next meeting. Is that right? Yeah, so they're, they're keeping it alive. And I think when you see the vote coming out of the primary, if you, if it's not, if there are so much undervotes and very few candidates, I think that, that's kind of a report card on our city. I'd like to see more candidates be involved. I'd like to see, and I'd like to see them for some time, because I only went to one forum. I don't think you learn much from forums, but you learn a lot from the person's actions. And one person's actions that I've been impressed with was sitting in the, on the back row, because he's come to just about every council meeting. I think you can learn a lot between the primary and the general election, so that's why I say I'd, clean up the language, keep it the way it is.
Well, I think at this point, Council, Mayor Protam Can't Tell Me, we probably can ask for a poll of the remaining council members about who would like to either maintain the current policy or support changing it to accounting of ballots only. Votes only, yeah. I suppose we could take public comment.
Jay Ruby.
Hello, City Council. Thank you for acknowledging the issue of repeat elections. My name's Jay Ruby, and I am running for a seat on city council. I was in the August election. For the purpose of government efficiency and fiscal responsibility, I am urging Prescott City Council to amend our Section 9, Article 6 of the city charter and stop repeat elections. We need clear language for determining the results of multi-seat elections. The charter is currently silent on multi-seat first-round elections. The charter is currently silent on multi-seat first-round elections and applies a formula for single-seat races, which leaves the city repeating elections, leading to confusion, wasting resources, and vulnerable to legal action. Arizona has a formula recommended by the League of Cities and Towns that addresses repeat elections. In 2015, the Arizona State Legislature unanimously approved this formula under the Senate leadership of Andy Biggs when Karen Phan was our state representative. The Biggs-Phan-approved formula effectively tallies the votes of multi-seat races and stops repeat elections. If it's good enough for Andy Biggs and Karen Phan, it should be good enough for Prescott. If you applied the Biggs-Phan formula to Prescott's city elections since 2013, it would have given us the same results in all races, but would have saved the city approximately a quarter million dollars and spared us the cost of the 2017 repeat election, the 2019 runoff, and this year's repeat election. There are two ways to stop repeat elections. City council can do the right thing by proposing a charter amendment and put it to the voters. We, the people of Prescott, can also propose a charter amendment through a citizens initiative. We can implement the language of the Biggs-Phan-approved formula into our charter so that we can vote to save money and stop repeat elections. I have started a citizens initiative to stop repeat elections, and I have copies for everyone in this room to sign today. Let's get this done and make Prescott more efficient and fiscally responsible so we can focus on the larger issues of water management, economic development, and effective housing policy. My name is Jay Ruby, and I look forward to serving you. Thank you.
Jim Garing.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Jim Garing in Prescott Lakes. And in my view, the language in the charter is plain and unambiguous. It requires, in order to figure out who was elected to council or not, the number of ballots cast for city council. So I had a couple of emails back and forth with Lauren Cusus of the Elections Department of the county, and I pointedly asked her how many ballots were cast for city council. Her answer to me is, I quote, "Unfortunately, our election management system does not break out that data." So you can't comply with the charter if you don't have that data, so something has to change. Now, I did do quite a bit of research into the state statute, and the state statute is also plain and unambiguous, but it also accounts for the number of candidates, and it has very precise calculations. So my thought would be to switch to the state statute as it deals with elections for Prescott. Thank you.
Kathy Rusing.
Good afternoon, Mayor-elect Kathy Rusing. I agree, we do need to update our city charter. I'm speaking as a candidate and as a voter. There's nothing more frustrating than to vote in an election and have no winner. And it costs us time and money. So I support amending our charter to comply with the state statutes. And when you talk about a majority, that's 50%, but one and plus one, which works fine if you just have two candidates. But you know, with the city council election, you're going to have at least three. And that's where you need to bring in the word plurality, okay? I have, the plurality, the plurality method is a voting method in which the choice with the most votes wins. The winning choice need not have captured a majority of votes in a contest with more than two choices. So that's why we just need to go to the top three vote-getters, keep it simple, comply with the state statutes, and hopefully prevent this from happening. Because when you have to wait for the winner to be declared in the November election, that's just barely two weeks before they get sworn in, and it doesn't give them much time to do the onboarding and transitioning period. Thank you.
That's all, Mayor.
Okay, I think we're at the point where we can poll the council members that are present to find out whether they would support maintaining the current policy or adopting the state policy of counting the number of votes. Councilman Gamboge.
Keep the count of majority based on vote, or, excuse me, on ballots, and keep it, keep the primary, and then do the necessary rewarding to make it clearer.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
I exactly align where Ted is.
Councilman Moore.
I personally think it would be a good idea to align the city with the state statutes. That's my recommendation.
Mayor Protam.
I agree with that. And at the very least, if we do not do that, we need to change the verbiage in the original that we have here.
Change it to what?
Change in the language, some of the, where it refers to votes, they need to be changed to "that ballots" and take out "for that office." I think it's misleading.
Well, I'm of the opinion that we adopt the statewide vote for counting actual votes rather than ballots. I've been in that position myself, where at primary election night, I thought I had achieved the 50% plus one, but after the late earlys, or the early lates, or whatever they call them, were counted, I found out that I'd been about 30 or 40 votes short. So then trying to have some way to reach the voters over the next several months was very difficult. And I don't think the votes ended up changing very much as far as the elected candidates. But you're right, being able to be prepared to step in to taking that seat with only, really, literally, a couple of weeks between the end of the voting and the time you're sworn in, makes it a little more difficult than if you knew that you were elected and you could really put in the time to study the charter, the other major issues that you're going to be expected to vote on once you're sworn in. I just think it makes more sense, and it would ultimately save the taxpayers a lot of money with very rare changes in the top three. So I would support that. So is it up three to two?
Yep. So, and we'll start working on that language. Obviously, we won't put it through. It comes back to council, council will vote on that, and it'll eventually go to the voters, but we can start that process.
Very well, that concludes this Item A on our agenda. Item B, City Clerk.
Presentation and discussion regarding an update on the Willow Lake Management Plan. You guys will need to come grab the clicker from me.
Good afternoon, Prescott City Council, city staff, members of the public. My name is Jeremy Cordova. I'm the Environmental Project Manager for City of Prescott Public Works. And alongside my consultant, Lisa Clark, will be providing an update on the Willow Lake Management Plan. A brief outline of our agenda for this presentation. I'll provide some background on Willow Lake, or the Willow Creek Reservoir, as it is officially known, known as. And I'll provide some background on the need for the management plan, and then I'll hand it off to my consultant, Lisa Clark, who will provide details about the process, what participants are included and what roles they have, our expectations and timelines for public engagement, as well as council engagement and city staff engagement. And we'll have some time for questions and input at the end. So some brief background on Willow Lake, or the Willow Creek Reservoir. We call it Willow Lake, as that's the common community verbiage that local residents know it as. It was originally constructed between 1912 and 14, and in 1935, the Willow Creek Dam, as we know it today, was constructed, the large concrete structure. Between 1935 and 65, a crosscut channel was constructed from Watson Lake to Willow Lake to transfer water. And over the next 30 years, that channel was upgraded and improved. In 1998, the City of Prescott developed an operational plan for Watson and Willow Lakes, and then they acquired the land, as well as the water rights, for Watson and Willow Lakes from the Chino Valley Irrigation District. And at the end of that year, 1998, the Watson and Willow Lakes Master Plan was developed, which guides our operation of the two lakes to this day.
Councilman Gamboge.
I heard what you said, Jeremy, but I'm still confused. It took 30 years to dig a channel between Willow Creek and Watson Lake to dig it with a spoon?
My understanding is that it was originally an open ditch, and then portions of it were converted to concreted ditch, enclosed piped channel, corrugated metal pipe. It's undergone a few generations of development.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I had the same question when I saw the 30 years it took to dig a ditch. So part of the need for a management plan that is specific to Willow Lake, rather than having a Watson and Willow Lakes Master Plan, is that Willow Lake and Watson Lake are very different. Willow Lake is very unique. Willow Lake has an ADWR rated full capacity of approximately 5,980 acre feet, and it provides a very wide range of recreational opportunities for local residents: fishing, non-motorized boating, birding, hiking. I recently become aware that climbing is rather popular there as well, and it's a very popular bass-fishing reservoir. It supports a large range of wildlife species and riparian habitats that are different from those at Watson Lake, and there are some threatened and endangered species at Willow Lake that do, at least in a legal sense, require some protection. And another point is that the vast majority of visitors to Willow Lake are local residents. We learned from the tourism department that approximately 173,000 people visit Willow Lake annually, and Watson receives about 250,000 visitors. So it's inarguable that Watson is more popular. It's, you know, recently hosted the Fourth of July, a music festival, classic car show, many other events. And Willow Lake is much quieter, more natural. The vast majority of visitors to Willow Lake are coming from within approximately a 30-minute drive window, so it's very popular with local people. Watson and Willow Lakes are very different in that Watson is a long, deep, cold-water lake, and Willow is a large, broad, warm-water lake. So they have very different environments, very different lake morphologies. They have different management needs and different Arizona Department of Environmental Quality, Water Quality targets. And that's one of the reasons we believe that a plan unique to Willow Lake is needed. So currently, Watson and Willow Lake management is governed by the Master Plan, which was developed in 1998. Some of our goals, or some of our reasons that we see this plan as being needed, is we would like to improve the coordination between city departments, general awareness, and provide an ability for additional teamwork, connection, communication, kind of reduce the siloing effect of different departments, just sort of operating in their own separate spaces. And we would like to try to meet some of the city goals that would help to address the low water levels with strategies for water quantity improvement, as well as water quality improvement. We do have management needs specific to Willow Lake in terms of very high sediment loading that requires management. And in addition to that, Willow Lake being a large, broad, and shallow lake, a very small change in water level can produce a very significant change in the location of the shoreline. And that leads to a lot of vegetation growing in during any low-water period. And the vegetation that grows in below the level of the dam spillway will ultimately end up underwater, dramatically impacting water quality, water access, you know, fishing, boating, and so...
Excuse me, Jeremy.
Yes.
Councilman Gamboge has a question.
Sure.
Hey, Jeremy. When both lakes are full, how would you compare the surface area of the two?
Watson Lake at full is approximately 230 acres, and Willow Lake is approximately 450, if I recall. So Willow Lake is a much larger body of water, but in the deepest pockets, it is only half the depth of Watson Lake. So we would like to help to meet some of the city goals for vegetation management, as well as wildlife habitat management and protection. And we're seeking a lot of engagement with the community to understand what the community wants, needs, and expects from the city out of Willow Lake. And we would like to provide strategies to the city for, you know, increases in recreational opportunities, educational opportunities, in addition to water quality, quantity, and the vegetation management. And so with that, going to turn it over to my consultant, Lisa Clark, and she'll provide information about the plan and our process, and I'll remain available in case of any questions.
Awesome, thanks, Jeremy, and thank you, councilors, for the opportunity to talk with you all. My name is Lisa Clark. I'm with Southwest Decision Resources. We are a facilitation firm based in Arizona. We have an office in Flagstaff, Phoenix, and Tucson, and we work on natural resource issues across the state and in the Southwest. You can see on this picture, the four of us that are circled are the team that are working on the Willow Lake Plan. So myself and Jessica Olson, she's the one at the bottom left-hand corner, we're kind of taking the lead on the project, we're the ones that'll be doing most of the interfacing, and then we'll have some support from Carrie Everly and Mark Loseth. And then we've got our city core team there as well, Jeremy and Matt Colleen from Environmental Services, and then we also have Leslie Grazer and Brian Reese with Water Services, John Hilton with Stormwater, Chris Haskin, who's the trails guy in Rec Services, and Covino Martinez, who's also in Rec Services. So just to give you an idea of the other projects that SDR has worked on, Southwest Decision Resources, we have done quite a few projects in the region, so both Verde Valley and on the Prescott side. So Verde Front, Greater Prescott Trails Planning, I won't read through all of these, but different types of recreation projects, watershed-focused projects, municipal projects. So we're bringing all of that to bear in this planning process, learning from that, and also bringing some relationships, pre-existing relationships with partners to the table to help bring folks together and help build the relationship between City of Prescott staff and important partners for the management of the lake. So just to give you a snapshot, I'll give you a little bit more detail in a moment here, but this is kind of the general process for us. So we start with an assessment phase, which we are nearly complete with right now, just getting a good sense of, you know, how is the management going right now at the lake? What are the things that we really need to be thinking about and making sure to include? And also, what are those things that we really need to have some in-depth discussion, both with partners and with the community about? Usually points of disagreement between agencies or City of Prescott and the community, so we can really hash those out before it gets to a final plan. And then we're just starting this phase of partner and public engagement, so we'll have various different meetings, public meetings, and then we'll have our drafts and revisions. In reality, the partner and public engagement will be pretty iterative with the plan drafting and revision, so we'll make sure to continue to bring it back to partners, bring it back to the community, bringing it back to council as well, and then moving into that adoption and continued collaboration phase. So really, what we're focusing on is So really, what we're focusing on is maintaining the unique values of Willow Lake that Jeremy was just talking about. An really important piece is making sure that we're having departments talk to each other and also laying the foundation for how that's going to continue into the future. So that's going to be an important component of the plan, is how the different departments are going to be working together, who's taking the lead on each piece of the puzzle. Building lasting relationships with partners for essentially the same reason, you know, the city is not responsible for every component of the lake, so making sure those relationships are strong and we know how to work together. Sharing information with the public is also going to be an important piece as well throughout the process, so the goal is to bring them along, so there's nothing shocking at the end when we have a final plan. Really, the hope is to get support from the ground up on this. And then, of course, having a usable plan. We don't want it to sit on the shelf, so incorporating whatever we can into that to make sure it can move into implementation relatively easily. So I'll walk you through this. There's a lot in this graphic here. So this is our assessment phase, like I was just saying. So we have our core team, which I already mentioned. We've been meeting with them regularly. We did a visioning meeting with city staff to really get everyone on the same page about where are we going with Willow Lake. And then we've got our steering committee, so it's basically the core team plus some key partners to help us think about the plan as a whole and how, what are the things that we're missing? How are these things fitting together? And those will be kind of bimonthly. And then, of course, this meeting right now is kind of the cap on our assessment phase. So the next thing that we'll be diving into is really having these working groups that are focused on specific topics. So we'll have one focused on, like, the water stuff, one focused on the recreation, one focused on the community, and then one focused on vegetation and habitat.
Excuse me, Lisa, but Councilwoman Ferworth has a question.
Of course.
Thank you, Mayor. A question for you on the other members of the steering committee, the key external partners, whether either of you at this point in time have that identified of who you'd be going after, or is that something still not completed yet?
Yeah, that's a great question. We'll see if I can remember them off the top of my head. We had our first meeting two weeks ago, so it's not set in stone yet. We may be adding more, but it includes ADQ...
Fish and Wildlife.
Fish and Wildlife, Game and Fish, Audubon Society, Central Arizona Wildlife Alliance.
Audubon Society is among them as well?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, yeah.
Prescott Creeks, thank you. I think that's, hopefully, that's all of them. And then we're, of course, asking that group of people, does anyone else need to be a part of this conversation? Oh, Yavai County Flood Control is on there as well.
Councilman Gamboge.
In your four objectives, water supply, recreation, community outreach, and vegetation, is vegetation related to water supply? I mean, if there's a lot of vegetation in there, does that make the lake higher?
Yes.
No, it makes the lake higher. If you took it away, the lake would go lower.
I could field that if you like.
Who's on first?
Sure. So the concern with vegetation management is on a few fronts. Number one, we have fire management, so we want to keep underbrush and dead brush, dead material to a minimum. But in terms of aquatic and near-lake vegetation, our concern is that as the lake level goes down and vegetation grows in, it's true that that vegetation occupies volume that would raise the level of the lake, but that doesn't mean that you have more water. You actually have less storage capacity despite your lake level appearing to be higher. And the vegetation that is under the level of the water does fairly dramatically impact the water quality.
So vegetation does impact the level of the lake?
Yes.
And how much, is there any metric on how much water we have to have behind the dam on both Watson and Willow?
I'm sorry, was your question how much water we are, we have to have?
Is there any requirement that the water level has to be so much in order for the dam to stand, or how high can it get?
That might be a little outside of our scope, but my understanding is there is some level of legal requirement to maintain a level of lake. There cannot be no water, but it is not possible to intentionally drain the lakes below the level of their drain valves. So, for example, Willow Lake is sitting at about 15 feet below spill, and it's not really possible to lower it anymore, a small amount.
Last question. Among these four categories, will you also prioritize them?
So these four categories, we're going to have a working group for each one of them. So I think not necessarily right now. As we go through the process, here, I'll show you the next piece. So once we get the working groups together and we've had some discussion with them, hashed out some of these things that are not super clear, what direction we want to go, we'll have a community meeting. And the community meeting will be a good opportunity to prioritize. I think that's kind of the goal, is to get to the point of having some really concrete things that the community can give feedback on, and then let us know what they think the priority is. With that in mind, we do recognize that there are some things that are a requirement for the city, like storage capacity. So those things are what we're trying to flesh out right now, make sure we know what those are. And of course, those are going to be top priority because they are a requirement. And then beyond that, it'll be up to the community and the partners as well.
Based on the language that is in the bond used to purchase Willow Lake, we are currently prioritizing water quality and quantity, simply because that's the legal reason the lake was purchased, not to disparage any other category.
Jeremy, can you explain to me the nature of the contract with Southwest Decision Resources? Did they approach the city? Did we, did we have a request for qualifications? Did we go out to bid? How much is the value of the contract? How long does it last?
Sure.
How do you measure success? Do we work on things like total maximum daily load? How can we determine whether the investment we're making with this contract is going to provide measurable results for the taxpayers?
Great question. So we approached Southwest Decision Resources after some conversations with the contracts department, where they let us know that based on the unique needs of this plan, it was highly unlikely that a request for proposals or statements of qualifications would lead to more than one submittal. And so we were advised a direct-select process is entirely appropriate, legally speaking. The contract term is for one year for a value of $110,000. And our measure of success is if we can produce an actionable plan that is adopted by all the city departments. So currently, we feel we have a good measure of success in the fact that Water Resources, Environmental Services, and Recreation Services are all very much on board with the plan, actively participating. For example, several city employees reached out to us and asked if they could be part of this plan, which lends itself to greater acceptance once we have a plan in place. People are more likely to follow a plan that they were part of and requested to provide input to. Let's see. Please let me know if I missed any of your questions.
We anticipate this first year of just creating an actionable plan. And then after the first year, you're going to go into implementation. So that would necessitate a second contract to manage the implementation of the plan and then be able to measure the plan's expected results.
So we currently, I would say we are tentatively expecting that there would be some contract extension beyond one year due to the wide scope of this plan. It simply could require more than one year to complete the plan. In terms of implementation, we had not anticipated needing outside guidance for implementation. We were anticipating that the plan would be structured and presented in such a manner that, you know, the implementation would be fairly simple. You know, there will be some changes likely to how the lake would be managed, but they would not be, you know, very dramatic changes.
Yeah, I'm just concerned that you're going to have measurable goals so that you can determine whether the investment here has achieved the expectations that you have and that the taxpayer dollars going into this whole process is going to be justified. So I guess we'll have to wait and see how the plan develops and then determine whether the city will be the implementer and then have goals that can be actually measured.
Right. Like, in terms of, for example, water quality is one of the portions of the project that I work closely on. I perform the sampling and monitoring of Willow Lake at minimum monthly. And so we'll be looking to the plan in my group to see what are your strategies for water quality improvement? And if we implement those strategies, you know, it should be demonstrated in water-quality data. You know, does the lake have a pH closer to neutral? Does it have oxygen levels that are higher and to greater depths? The lake would support more and larger fish, and that could be evidenced through game-and-fish surveying. And we also have a game-and-fish metric that we like to use called angler satisfaction, so we could measure the satisfaction of lake users who come to the lake for fishing. Currently, we're at just below 80% according to game-and-fish, but their target's about 85. So we'll look at some strategies in the plan to improve things like angler satisfaction and then check in with game-and-fish, you know, did that metric actually improve?
So do you have benchmark numbers for all those categories right now?
I would have benchmark numbers handy for water quality, but it would be, I think the other benchmark numbers would be provided by other members of the core team.
So by the end of this planning year, you should have benchmark numbers so that you can then measure progress against those numbers, along with a goal that you're expecting to be able to achieve?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Any other questions before I start moving on?
Please proceed, Lisa.
Okay, thank you. All right, so I'll just back up a little bit. I know I talked about this a bit with the working groups. All I want to throw in there that I haven't said already is really that that's where we are going to have those detailed conversations about benchmarks, about what are these goals and the strategies, you know, what makes sense for the City of Prescott to be responsible for versus ADQ or AD game-and-fish. So that's where we'll be having those kind of nitty-gritty discussions, and then the things that are not agency-specific or, you know, city-specific will then be the things that we take out to the community.
Councilman Gamboge had another question.
Yeah.
For example, in metrics, in the cover sheet, it talked about all the willows and cottonwoods we have down there, and those are water drinkers. So will you have some number that says of the 103 trees down there, we're going to cull it out to 67?
Yeah, currently, we have a number of willow trees growing below the level of the dam spillway. That's on the order of tens of thousands, perhaps. And so we're looking at strategies for mowing or culling in some way that would reduce those. And then we could examine, after we've implemented those vegetation management strategies, you know, are there fewer willows than we saw before? Because, as you said, they're thirsty trees, they're below the level of the spillway, they'll drink the water and impact the water quality, so we would be managing those. And then noting the distribution of the vegetation, has it lessened?
Yeah, and I will say, within the plan, we are, we will be having discussions about what are things we need to be thinking about when the water is really low, like it is right now, versus when it's high water. What does that look like? Where is that threshold between high and low water? When does the management shift from one to the other? So that'll be part of the discussions as well. Okay, so throughout this process, we'll have the working groups, go to the community meeting, we'll come back to council again. We'll give you more details on kind of what's going into the plan once we have more of that information, go back out to our working groups, have another community meeting. So, like I said, it'll be iterative. We'll be getting feedback throughout the process and really building this plan with support from partners in the community. So then, really, just our next steps here, we have standing steering committee meetings. We just, like I said, we had our first two weeks ago. We're going to be having a site visit next week, next Thursday. So we'll be taking out, going out with staff and with our steering committee to just visit the site, see what we need to see, see what comes out while we're all there. And then for, in terms of council, we do plan on coming back when we have a draft plan more or less in place. There may not be a full document, but we will at least have some more robust information about what's going to be included with each of those pieces. That was all we had. You know, if you have feedback on the approach, areas of emphasis, your involvement going forward as the council, we'd love to hear all of that as well.
Councilman Gamboge.
Sounds interesting. Some counsel I might give you. I haven't seen an initiative come before the council in my two years here that doesn't have pros and cons. And I think it's important that we, earlier, remember I asked you, are you going to prioritize these four things? I think when you come back, you ought to have some metrics of what we plan to do and what the benefit would be to doing that. Like if you, if Eric Moore was charged with the job of scuba diving into the lake and taking out all the vegetation, what's the benefit of that? Because I think, we've got to realize, there's two audiences here. There's a mechanically-practical audience that's worried about how much water is in the lake. And then we have people that are concerned about nature. So when you talk about taking down a tree, you're going to talk about some bird somewhere. So when you come back, it's not only important to have measurable metrics, but a cost-benefit analysis. So thank you very much.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding council engagement, I can see from this chart you showed earlier, we're at the first star there, the blue star with council info. And then some point, it looks like about spring-ish of '26, you'll be back here with, to share the plan. I'm assuming, because this is a management plan, that adoption, in essence, approval and implementation, does not rest with council? But I just wanted to have that question and dialogue because I didn't see one more blue star burst out there in the end, so...
I think that we would seek some guidance from, perhaps, perhaps from the council about how we could ensure that the various departments do adopt the plan. You know, I can, for example, achieve a verbal willingness to do so, but it is possible that there could need to be, say, an official mandate that this is our plan and the departments will adopt it.
Dallin, I kind of view this as your job, but tell me what you think.
No, that's right. So once the council adopts the plan, we take that plan as direction. Yeah, we'll ask for council adoption. Once the council adopts a plan, we'll take that as direction and we'll manage the departments from there.
Councilman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, as the resident bird watcher up here, thank you, Ted. I do have a lot of my own personal feelings about this habitat, as you might imagine, and I know we're going to hear from speakers in the audience today, too. I love the concept of angular, I don't even know how you say that, I want angler satisfaction. We should have a birder satisfaction. That would be awesome. But there's a lot of biomass. There's just hundreds of thousands of trees and things, and even a lot of temerisk is now sprouting. I was out there last night. I'm out there three, four, five times a week, and it's really an imperiled habitat. It's very unhealthy, very, very unhealthy. And I know that we've got a great group of people that are going to work on this, and we really need to look at some of the serious issues, like mowing, for example, when the water level's below the spillway of the dam. If you mow, then you're going to leave all that biomass just sitting on the surface of the soil. And then when the water goes back up, then it's, you have all this rotting vegetation in the water. So we need to look at different methods for handling that biomass that is growing. So we need to look at different methods for handling that biomass that is growing right now. It is literally so thick right now that you're, I mean, it's eye level with me, I'm six feet something tall, it's so tall right now, and there's literally thousands and thousands of willows and cottonwoods coming up and tamarisk, it's very, very unhealthy, and it's going to need a lot of work. And so I'm really glad that, as a city, we're developing a management plan that's separate from Watson, and that we're going to put emphasis specifically on Willow, it's the right thing to do, it's long overdue, and I really look forward to seeing the results, and I'd love to go on your walk next Thursday as a frequent user of the facility.
We'll be sure you're included.
Thank you.
May I respond to your statements?
Absolutely.
Okay. First, I'd like to know where those tamarisk are, because I'm armed with a chainsaw and a partner, and we can get rid of them?
Jeremy, microphone.
Pardon me, I would like to know where those tamarisk are.
I can show you.
Thank you.
I know right where they are.
And then in response to your point about the organic material, there are a number of means that we can use to break down and remove the organic material. So for example, your willows grow in during a low-water stand, they're drowned, they decompose, or they die, but they don't decompose, actually. There's not enough oxygen on the bottom of the lake to break down all that organic material. And we have the same problem in Watson Lake and also in Upper Goldwater Lake. And throughout this summer, we've been treating Upper Goldwater Lake with a product called Muck Away, it's a natural bacterial and enzyme product that breaks down the organic material, and it's off-gassed out of the lake as hydrogen. And what we've been seeing is increased oxygen levels down to greater depths, along with a sandier lake bottom that is not so organic and, you know, mucky, as people call it. And so that's an example of something that could be in our management plan, is do we need to be applying Muck Away at Willow Lake when the water level rises again?
Thank you for that response. I know that we used to have a sand and gravel operation, not that that was a good thing, but there is so much sedimentation at the lake that it's really filled in, and it would be nice to remove, you know, 10 feet of the existing bottom of the lake to increase not just the quality, but the quantity of water that we can store in that lake, and with the lake being so low as it is right now, you can literally walk from the South Shore to the North Shore on dry ground right now. It hasn't been like that since we bought the lakes in 1998, because of course, the Chino Valley Irrigation District used to draw it down all the way empty, year after year, to use it for irrigation purposes, but since we bought it, we've been maintaining a level of water. The one comment you made was that we can't lower the lake anymore, but nature's lowering it naturally with drought and the lack of precipitation, it's not refilling. So that's a real concern, because it continues to go down every single day.
Do you have any public comment on this, Seagull?
We do not, Mayor.
Well, thank you, Lisa, and thank you, Jeremy, and we look forward to the development of this plan.
Mayor, somebody forgot to turn in their sheet.
Oh.
Oh.
Sorry. I thought that was... Susan drowned.
Okay.
You're up, Susan.
All right. Thanks, good job.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm up here sort of wishing, oop, I'm up here wishing that I ever took that public speaking course that I never took. So I did bring some notes. I guess I represent a strong portion of the public who's interested, in particular in the southwest Canopy Forest area of Willow Lake. I do believe that this management plan is comprehensive, it involves a number of departments, it involves water quality, and many, many issues that do need to come together, and I'm very excited about that. I think this is the right way for the city to go, but I'll try and keep my comments just from my public user perspective, and I'll try and keep it just to the southwest part of Willow. There's sort of a carrot and stick here, the stick part of my comments has to do with the endangered species that are in that Willow and Cottonwood section on southwest part of the lake. And in July 2024, the city did receive a letter from the Threatened and Endangered Species Biologist for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and it was very articulate, and it was very thoughtful, and it was also a little bit of a shot across the bar, that the city does need to pay attention to the fact that they have an endangered species in this area. He goes on to say that the five territories recorded at Willow and Granite Creeks may seem like a small number, this is territories of the southwest Willow Flycatcher, but in context of the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service Management Unit, it's an important component of recovery of this species. He says, "We don't have too many areas like Prescott in Arizona where flycatchers are nesting close to urban areas." And I think this is an exciting line, because it's an opportunity. People come to see those birds, they come to be in that area, it's accessible, it's flat, it's a great recreational asset. And I don't know if you think of it that way, but I do. Oh, by the way...
Susan, the city clerk didn't inform you that your comments were limited to three minutes?
Okay.
So I'll give you another minute and a half to conclude your remarks.
That's perfect, thank you. I guess I'll go on to say that my hope is the city can embrace this concept that the city assets that support this sort of dispersed recreation are actually a huge economic driver. It's much less visible than golf course fees or event fees, but in fact, many, many people come even to Willow, not just from here, but I know because, I'm also a birder, and every time there's an unusual species found at Willow, the next day I run into birders from Tucson and Phoenix, and there are people coming up. I know because it's not measured, this dispersed recreation. I led two groups for the Birdy Verdy Festival last April around the lakes, we had people come in and stay overnight, we all went to lunch at one of the Whiskey Row restaurants, none of that gets measured, but it's there and it's strong, and it's a real asset for the city of Prescott. And I'm excited to think about how we could work that southwest part of Willow. So if you can imagine, in the trailhead area behind the dog park right now, expand the parking area, put in one of your parking fee kiosks, have pedestrian-only access to the sensitive areas to manage human impact and protect the forest there, have some educational signage, it's affordable, and it will draw people to Prescott. Just my thinking, thank you. Go Packers!
And go Packers!
On public record.
Councilman Moore, do you have a last comment?
I did, Mayor, thank you. I just, I'm concerned, and maybe I'm missing someone in the audience, but I'm really concerned that I don't see recreation here. And we're talking about having this collaborative effort with city departments, and I cannot imagine why we would have a study session with no representation from Parks and Rec at this meeting, that we're discussing this important management of this facility for recreation, as well as water quality and quantity, and so that is a red flag to me, and I just want to point that out.
My understanding is that our recreation team, core team members had some prior engagements, but they did wish to be here.
Well, I know there's a large department with a lot of staff, and I think they could have sent somebody.
Yeah, I can't believe that all of them are involved. All right, well, thank you again, Jeremy, and Mayor Protan, do you have a last comment?
Well, I was just very quickly going to suggest to our new Economic Development Department that we have a birding festival.
Yes.
Led by Councilmember Moore. Thank you.
Let's do it. There are birding festivals all across this state, and, I mean, Wilcox, Arizona, population 3,100 people, host an incredible birding festival every year in January called Wings Over Wilcox, and they have hundreds of people that come from all over the country to see that spectacle of 30,000 sandhill cranes and snow geese, and here we are with these lakes and no birding festival, what's wrong with us?
Let's do it.
All right, with all those last comments, this study session is adjourned, and we'll be reconstituting our voting meeting at 3:00 PM.